Despite some outrageous claims that I really, quite frankly, do find repulsive, the intention of bringing recommendations to this board, in no way do we, do I, want to see any child hurt. I do value diverse learners and would never ignore nor abandon their right to fully participate in our schools and to receive the education that they deserve. As a result, my team has given significant time, necessary time, required time, and attention to the students with individualized education plans and their families who will receive continual support throughout the transition to ensure that their academic, social, and emotional needs are met and that the IEPs are seamlessly integrated into the welcoming schools. We have sent over 2,500 individual letters to each parent of the children affected. We've called 2,500 homes and have made actual contact with 70 percent of the families, and we're continuing this outreach through the process. We've worked closely with the advocates in this community who have informed our work every step of the way. Finally, I've read the concerns of the 21 hearing officers who conducted 66 of the hearings to determine if our process had complied with the law. With respect to their role in this process and the value of their enormous job, we thank them. We did not ignore nor dismiss them. Of the total 66 actions reviewed, 57 were deemed compliant. With respect to the nine that were identified as non-compliant, we have addressed those concerns. I must advise here, however, that the transition plans reviewed by the hearing officers are and will be, and will continue to be, under development. These are living documents. The transition plans are not a finite document. They're living documents, and the local school communities must play a role in their further development once this board makes a decision. The transition process will not be completed until well into the opening of school in August. The hearing officers' reports serve as an impetus for us to revisit our plans for those nine schools and to revise and strengthen them where needed, and that's exactly what we've done. Earlier this week, we released updated transition plans of the nine schools. The hearing officers concluded we're not in compliance, and we addressed with greater specificity their specific concerns. And in each instance, we posted those. Our chief transformation officer, Todd Babbitts, will provide an overview of the work that has gone on thus far to respond to the hearing officers. Todd?
President Vitale, members of the board, with respect to the hearing officer reports, as CEO Bird Bennett just identified, we had 66 total hearings in front of 21 hearing officers. Fifty-seven of those reports were found to be compliant. There were several in which some issues were identified, namely around transition plans that were deemed not to be sufficiently specific or tailored to the unique cases. In a few instances, there were questions raised around the academic performance of the welcoming school and whether students were given the option to enroll in a higher-performing school. There was one or two in which future development was considered not to have already been addressed in the context of the transition plans or in the planning, and in one instance, there was identification that we had not given proper notice to the community. As Barbara identified, we have since updated nine transition plans. They were Mayo and Wells, Buckingham and Montefiore, Morgan and Ryder, Delano and Melody, Manir and Jenner, King Jensen, Jackson for Dearborn, Stewart Brenneman, and Courtney and Stockton. In the vast majority of these, the issues with respect to the transition plans that have been identified centered around two primary issues: one was safety and security, and the other was addressing students with diverse learning needs. These updated plans were posted on May 20th. With respect to safety in particular, what we've provided in these transition plans, and this is something that we plan to do with respect to all of the transition plans, is provide greater specificity that is unique and tailored to those specific school pairings. For example, we provided school-specific safe passage routes. These were identified, as discussed, in partnership with the Chicago Police Department. We've also identified school-specific enhancements to the full-time security staff that would be in place at the combined schools. And we've also identified, for specific school pairings, the technology enhancements that would be in place, both with respect to camera systems and also enhanced school entry equipment. As identified, these are living documents, and we do have meetings scheduled with parents in order to further refine those plans. With respect to safety and security, I also want to clarify our transportation offers that have been in place and identify additional transportation routes that have been discussed and recommended should the board approve certain actions. In our initial proposals, transportation was offered based on distance. Specifically, transportation was provided for current students of any school with a neighborhood component where the welcoming school was more than 0.8 miles walking distance. The promise of transportation along these routes is being offered until all current schools graduate. There were 10 such routes: Bethune to Gregory, Bon Temps to Nicholson, Cantor to Ray, Cantor to Hart, Erickson to Sumner, King to Jensen, Coen to Cullen, Overton to Molassen, and Trumbull to McCutcheon, and also Trumbull to McPherson. Based on additional feedback from community and safety and security, we're now recommending that five additional routes be added if the board approves the recommendations that are before it. In these cases, which are not purely based on distance, what we're suggesting is that transportation be provided for the first year and then evaluated twice per year thereafter based on need and the safety environment in place. These additional routes are Dodge to Morton, Melody and Delano; we've listed this as the current building of Melody and the current building of Delano; Parkman to Sherwood, the current Wentworth Building to the current Alt Gill Building, and West Pullman to Haley. Special education was also something, our diverse learners, was also something identified in a number of the hearing officer reports, and we've modified transition plans in order to account for it. Just following on the previous discussion on transportation, just want to make clear that transportation will continue to be provided to our diverse learners consistent with the students' IEPs, and that holds whether they were to go to their designated welcoming school or to choose an alternative option. The IP needs of every welcoming school student will also be reviewed and services provided as required. ADA renovations will be made where necessary. As one example, on Ryder and Morgan, we have specified ADA-based developments that will be in place, including making the building entrance accessible, installation of two elevators, making wheelchair-accessible toilet rooms and drinking fountains, and several other improvements that are now specified in that transition plan. Also, staffing for special education students will be implemented based on ISV and federal requirements that is now specified in the relevant transition plans. In a few instances, it was academic concerns that were raised. One example is Delano versus Delano and Melody, and we heard about that today already. We have now updated the transition plan there to specify that Melody is, in fact, on probation. We've also identified that under our guidelines, and these were the 2012-2013 Guidelines for School Actions that were published in November, we do consider Melody to be the higher-performing school. It is higher on the performance policy. It is also higher on our value-added reading and our value-added math metrics. One of the other issues that was raised in one of the hearing officer reports involved future development, specifically with respect to Calhoun and Cathar. At that hearing, I don't believe that members of CPS talked about our analysis of development, but in fact, that had taken place. Not only did we review the specific developments that were raised by the Alderman in that meeting, but we also reviewed planned developments, potential developments, that we know might occur in 2018, 2019, 2020, and 2022. And we talked with our sister agencies who have those development plans to understand how many elementary school students might be expected to come out of those developments, even if they were all to occur. And our conclusion was that even if all those planned developments came to fruition, and even if all of the students from those developments were to go to the designated welcoming school, that there would not be a risk of overcrowding. Finally, there was one notice issue that was raised in the reports involving the Williams and Drake combination. In our draft transition plan, what we had stated was that Drake would operate across two facilities, its current facility and the combined Williams and Urban Prep facility. After additional community discussion, including with elected officials, it was suggested that if one of the schools involved would need to operate across two buildings, that it ought to be Urban Prep and not Drake. It was based on that community input that our current proposal that was brought in the subsequent meetings suggested that Drake would be operating out of a single building and not Urban Prep. It's our view that this change of address, should it need to occur, is not required by the law as part of this notice. The proposal was fully discussed in our community meetings and the public hearings, and therefore, all the schools involved in the proposed closure and co-locations received adequate notification, whether it is the case that Drake would operate out of one building or two at the end of the day.
Thank you, Todd. Again, we come back to what started our discussions here over the past months, and that is that our utilization crisis is real. We must address the crisis because it is a critical component of a larger, comprehensive academic vision for the district. From unprecedented investments initiated by the mayor in early childhood education, full-day kindergarten, full-school day, single calendar, to ensuring there are quality principals and teachers in every school, we are making progress to provide every child with the tools and the resources they need to succeed. And while we celebrate the initiation of progress, we remain mindful of the challenges. We began this journey more than seven months ago, and I've committed my professional life to the education of children. I've made a commitment to this community to listen. I made a commitment to work to build trust; it does not happen overnight; to create transparencies and to gain respect for the system and for our communities. I, like members of the board, have visited the schools in question. I've reviewed all of the information during this process. I've met with each of you for intense debriefings. I've shared my thoughts with the mayor, and he has concurred with the modifications to the recommendations that I am proposing to you. I recommend that the board vote to approve that Kellerman move into Bethune Building as a result of the action to close Bethune into Gregory. Gregory will still serve as the welcoming school for Bethune. However, Kellerman will provide an additional option for Bethune students who choose to attend Kellerman. I recommend that the board vote "no" on the recommendation to make Barton an AUSL turnaround. Barton has invested in their teachers, such that 25 percent of them are nationally board-certified. Barton performs relatively close to its network average on performance indicators like attendance, and ISET reading meets and exceeds. Of the six proposed turnarounds, Barton had the highest ISET meets or exceeds in 2012. I recommend that the board vote to delay the closure of Cantor by one year, allowing the current students to be promoted to high school from Cantor. The original recommendation would have resulted in our students moving multiple times over four years, and this delay is being proposed to minimize the number of transitions that students would be required to make over four years. I recommend that the board vote "no" on the recommendation to close Manir. This school is the recent beneficiary of five multimillion-dollar initiatives that are in mid-implementation. Among these is the investment in the Child-Parent Center at Manir. We believe that these unique programs have a positive impact on enrollment and will continue to have a positive impact on enrollment over the next several years. In fact, that enrollment has already seen an increase in the demand for the parent-child center there from the last three years. I recommend that the board vote "no" to close Mahalia Jackson. Mahalia Jackson has a unique partnership with Columbia College that is specifically designed for the schools hearing impaired. This school is emerging as a model for inclusion, which is a federal mandate to guarantee that students with diverse learning needs are integrated into the general education learning environment. I recommend that the board vote "no" on the recommendation to close Erickson. This is the only citywide magnet proposed for closure. We need to preserve the choice for students in that neighborhood who have limited choices, particularly in the East Garfield Park area. We will make certain that we identify, consider, and support Erickson's academic program through our Office of School Support Services. And finally, I recommend that the board vote "no" on the recommendation to close Marcus Garvey. Marcus Garvey has a hallmark social-emotional learning program which has been nationally recognized for helping students to develop empathy and problem-solving skills. They have further implemented the Second Step curriculum, which has been demonstrated to reduce physical aggression and fighting among students by 42 percent. The Second Step curriculum will be implemented in all of our welcoming schools, and therefore, Garvey will serve as the training model. The recommendations that you consider today and that I have made to you are with the best interest of students in mind. The recommendations are intended to prepare the foundation for an equitable, high-quality, well-rounded education for every child in the Chicago community. I recognize that this is a difficult decision, but I implore you to do what is hard and not what is easy. Today, I'm reminded of the following quote: "Cowardice asks the question, 'Is it safe?'" "Expediency asks the question, 'Is it political?'" "Vanity asks the question, 'Is it popular?'" "But conscience asks the question, 'Is it right?'" There comes a time when one must take a position that's neither safe, nor political, nor popular, but it is one that one takes because it is right." These are not my words; these are the words of Dr. Martin Luther King. The only consideration for us today is to do exactly what is right for children. I thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Thank you for your presentation, and more importantly, thank you and your management team for the time, effort, and professionalism that you and they have put into this initiative. The analysis, planning, public engagement is unprecedented in CPS's experience. The decision to reduce our footprint as a school system is long overdue, and the complex task of how to do that in the most thoughtful and responsible way is upon us. No one can dispute the fact that there has been significant population in this city, primarily on the west and south sides. As a board, we have been out to each and every one of these impacted communities. We've walked past the abandoned buildings and vacant lots. We've walked through the underutilized schools with classrooms doubling as storage closets and entire floors devoid of students. Seeing the issues in an up-close and personal way has been absolutely vital in our decision-making today. Securing from the state legislature the time to engage the community on the front end of this process was a critical step in establishing the credibility of the outcome. Your appointment of the commission to confirm the fact base, to have it reach out to the community to introduce the issue and gather feedback, and to provide useful guidelines was an important additional element of objectivity. Gives me the opportunity to publicly thank Frank Clark and the commission members for their time and the value they added to the process. The additional community meetings you conducted in February and March gave voice to the thousands of parents, community leaders, and public officials who participated. We need to thank all of them for their participation. While sometimes exhausting, these steps fulfilled your commitment to listen to the community. I remember when last fall, many claimed there was a plan to close 100 or 200 schools. I repeatedly stated publicly that there was no such plan. There was, of course, substantial analytic work done to identify the challenge we faced and what the opportunities were for dealing with it. In fact, however, it was your process that took feedback from the commission and listened to stakeholders that produced the recommendations before us today. Your team has earned our appreciation and thanks, and we thank you. If I might now turn to my fellow board members. With these recommendations in hand, you took an extremely serious approach to delve deeply into what is a very complex set of issues, and I want to thank you for the extraordinary amount of time you've spent, particularly over the last two months. It is worth emphasizing that this board is not new to these issues, nor is this board new to these communities. Combined, we have decades of experience and expertise that has given us a solid foundation to work from. All of us have either taught and led schools in this district or led not-for-profits that serve these impacted communities. To enhance your understanding as board members of these recommendations, you have attended countless community meetings and hearings, provided extra office hours to meet with interested parties, visited schools both closing and welcoming, and have walked the neighborhoods. We have been criticized for not taking the security of our students seriously. We have been criticized for not listening to the community, and yet, we have visited each and every closing school, asking the question, "What do you find most challenging about this proposed action?" We have learned a great deal by sitting down with principals, assistant principals, teachers, and LSC chairs, and having meaningful dialogue. We have learned a great deal walking safe passage routes to understand the safety concerns of community leaders. We have learned a great deal driving around with public officials to understand the rich history of these neighborhoods and future planned development. Board has committed themselves to understanding the issues school by school while maintaining an understanding of the broader issues we face as a system. You have spent untold hours in briefings with management, providing valuable feedback to them, and challenging them on their recommendations. You've requested transportation in some cases; you've requested facility plans; you've requested supports for principals and teachers. You've enriched transition plans. At the most granular level, you have looked at special education data and ensured that those families be afforded improved services through the transition. You have encouraged and endorsed the positive side of this initiative, which is a substantial investment in the welcoming schools in these communities. And you have pushed that in each and every scenario, that the outcome for our students and parents will be a higher-quality education. And I'm pleased to say that Barbara and staff have responded to that feedback with changes to the original set of recommendations. And Barbara, we want to thank you. It makes our job somewhat easier today. But to the public, I would say, we all recognize that these are not easy decisions. For those of us who have been at these community meetings or out visiting schools, we do help but be moved by the sincerity of parents and community members as they make the case for their school as an institution of stability and safety in their neighborhood. Nor can we help but feel for the anxiety of our students as they think about going to a new school building and making new friends. Nor can we ignore the fears that parents and guardians express regarding the safety issues that proposed changes arouse. We do understand that these emotions and concerns are real, and we have taken them into consideration. But we have also heard, and I might say repeatedly, that the status quo is unacceptable, an assessment we also agree with. Today's reality requires change. It is undeniable that we have excess capacity in our system. It is also undeniable that we operate with constrained resources. Put together, these two realities require us to take action if our resources are to be optimized for the best interest of the education of all of our students. There are, of course, many opinions of how to deal with this reality, and I say we have listened to them all. But ultimately, it's our responsibility to choose. As we move forward with today's actions, I want to point out that I have spoken with each of my fellow board members frequently over the past few days. In light of the concerns that board members have expressed, the board secretary will proceed by presenting those actions separately. I say to my fellow board members who I've failed to reflect your views as we proceed along the vote, "I know you are not a shy group, and you will let me know." Finally, Barbara, a special thanks to you for the incredible thoughtfulness, experience, and leadership that you have brought to this issue. I don't know how we could have gotten to this point without you. Thank you. And now, I would welcome my fellow board members for any comments they would care to make.
Mr. President?
Let me start with him. Like my fellow board members, I've read the hearing reports, visited schools, talked to principals, and had hours of discussion with staff on individual school cases. I'm pleased that some schools originally slated to be closed have been removed from the list after due consideration. I know that not every performance metric in the remaining cases lines up consistently, and I agree that some cases are more difficult than others. However, as President Vitale has just said, we have an unsustainable situation with respect to utilization. Those who say that no funds will be saved by closing underutilized schools are simply wrong; they just don't know any economics. At the end of the day, we will save money by consolidating and closing underutilized schools, and we'll have more resources than we would have had to invest in the public school system of Chicago. I do believe we have to deal with overcrowding. We have this paradox in Chicago, or perhaps it isn't one, where we've had underutilization, as we know, because of demographic change, and some people today and earlier have come to us and talked about really severe overcrowding in certain schools, and we have to deal with that issue. I wish that those who oppose any and all closings, and we've heard many such people today and before, I wish that they had a better sense of how long away we have to go before we really can better serve the students of Chicago. We don't have a system that works well, and we have to make it better, and this is just a step on the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Carlos?
Thank you. I am the newest board member, appointed during these extremely difficult times. I was also the principal of a community school, and my own children attended my own neighborhood school. As I have visited multiple school communities to assess the current situation, the question I ask myself, "How would I have reacted to this reality for the school community that I served and for my own family?" If it weren't for the reason that we are concentrating our resources in nearby neighborhood schools, I would have supported none of these actions. I have visited many closing and welcoming schools lately to walk the talk, and some changes have been made as a result of recommendations. While we know that the system faces many challenges to deliver all of these supports, and we're going to monitor that closely as board members, many difficult decisions had to be made when resources are not abundant to keep all schools open. So now, our big responsibility is to make this work and make neighborhood schools stronger as a quality option in our communities, where we can unite with other neighborhood schools and form coalitions in the broader community. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Andy?
Last night, when I got home, I had a note from one of my neighbors. She's a teacher at CPS. In fact, she taught all three of my children. And like many of the notes that I've gotten and communications I've gotten about these school actions, it was passionate, heartfelt, and showed a true concern for the children of CPS. But also, like many of the messages that I've gotten about the school actions, it had no proposal for what to do. Its answer was, "Don't close the schools; do nothing." Or the other answer is, "Keep the schools open and put more resources in them." Those, of course, would be a great option. I wish we had it. We do not. I am moved by the passion of the people that we have seen, but I question, I've been on this board two years, I think it's two years, feels like about 20 right now, and in that two years, I haven't seen that passion, because here's what bothers me. In so many of our neighborhoods right now, our children do not have quality options. We have a book that colors the actions; the red ones are all the schools on probation. We have whole neighborhoods where all the neighborhood schools are red. Only one person today mentioned that issue; that was Alderman Thomas. We have to fix our schools, and in order to do that, we cannot continue to operate when we have too many schools for the number of students we have. We have to act. We cannot wait another year. We cannot wait. We cannot have our children waiting on this, and that is why I know we have to act. That's why we started this process. That's why we started this process, to get to this difficult decision of reducing our footprint so we can invest in our neighborhood schools for our children. I hope that the people who were as incensed about the actions turn their focus and energy on making sure that we make our commitments to make these schools better schools for our children, because that's what we've committed to do, and you should hold us to that. This process that we have been engaged in, I've heard many people tell me, we have a horrible track record on doing these turnovers and changes and closing schools, and yes, we do. But we've done an unprecedented effort here. This process has never been done. The engagement by the board, as we've talked about, we've all been to schools, we've talked, we've questioned, we've listened, we've dialogued. So we're already, and in the implementation process is different, it's already underway. So I believe we will have a different result because we're doing it a different way. Finally, I just want to, to those people, not finally, I have two more things, almost finally, to those who talked about, "We haven't listened," I want to remind everybody that listening does not necessarily mean that we will always agree. I am disappointed in the level and tone of much of the discourse. The idea that because we don't agree, somehow this board does not have the interest in children, and this district and the children's district in our hearts and in our minds is troublesome to me. It is hard to get to a good result if we start with pejoratives about each other because we do not agree about where we have to go. I also want to just touch on briefly the special ed and safety issues. We spend a lot of time focusing on these issues. Many of the board members have. I've had detailed conversations with Dr. Winston, with Jay Dean. They've been responsive. We have to focus on that, and we will. Those are not static plans. They will move and change as the needs have to be addressed, but we are doing that, and I believe that has been a heavy focus for this board and for staff and the team. Finally, I just want to say, going forward, we have to now focus on implementation and building positive, strong communities. One of the things that has been really concerning to me as I've visited schools is making sure that we change the attitudes of adults. On more than one school that I went to, the adults in the building talked to me about their inability for their children to deal with the children of another school. In one instance, that school was on the other side of a field, and the adults in the building told me that their children couldn't play on the same playground that they shared with the children across the field. My answer to that is, "They're children." And we wonder why our young people in Chicago don't view each other's lives as value, when the adults think it's okay that children across the field are somehow evil or the enemy because they go to a different school building. It is the adults who have to step up here and teach our children that, with respect, that because they go to a different school or live on a different block doesn't make them evil, doesn't make it right to dislike them or hate them. We have to create the positive school cultures for these kids. And in many of our schools right now, the receiving and welcoming schools, that work is going underway, and we have to commit to making that happen. I know that that will. I know that this board will be focused going forward on making sure that we meet the promises that we will make here to our parents, to our school communities, to make these schools to see what I see. I see taking those red dots to green so that our parents and our communities and the neighborhoods that we care about can go, can have a choice to take their kid to a school, that when they go to that school and they graduate from that school, they will have the skill sets and the education that they need to go on to their next level of education. We are not doing that today, and we've got to change that. Thank you.